I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the zoning board of appeals. March 12th, 2025 at 6:00 PM in Town Hall. Could you all please stand for the Fledge of Regents? Chuck Gaden present, Erin present, Kevin Dammee is absent, Joe Wilcock absent, Marty Ladd present, Andrew present, Jonathan present, and Lori's sick but she'll be listening. I'd like to make a request. After we do the continued public hearing, which is 24/25-15, Robin Stapelins. I'd like to move to 24/25-23, Teresa Salties' application, and then we'll move in the correct order.
Do you need to make a motion for that?
Can I, I'd like to make a motion to do that. All in favor? Okay, continued public hearing, 24/25-15, Robin Stapleins requested variance of par 10.7.1/10.7.2 non-conforming enlargement slash change. Par 24.5.1, street line setbacks, 25 required, 5 feet proposed in par 24.5.3 other yard setbacks. 15 feet required, 10.5 foot proposed in the room regulations to permit the construction of a 22, a 222 square foot deck at 20 Hill Street, map 20/lot 91, Residence A District, Coast率的 Management. Representing? Representing the applicant will be Robin Stapleins.
Can we just see who we're seating for?
Oh, seating tonight will be myself, Erin, Marty Ladd obviously, and Andrew and Jonathan Miles. Okay, just to make a note, I believe now you're not requesting the 227 square foot, but you're only requesting 100 square foot deck.
Exactly, yes, yes. And there was a porch on the house that was 100 square feet. It's on the gift card. And when I had to raise the house, the porch was in very bad condition and couldn't be raised. So now I'm asking to replace the porch with a deck of 100 square feet, the same footprint that the porch was.
Robin has been in front of us several times. What we do now have is a document that shows the deck that was originally an enclosed porch.
Yes.
The house has to be elevated due to breaking the 50% rule for FEMA.
Yeah.
So it's whatever FEMA says plus two feet, so per Old Saybrook.
Yeah.
So she is eligible to have steps that will get into her unit based on the FEMA requirements that way. Based on everything and the fact that we now have a drawing, I would like to open it to public comment. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak for or against this application? Hearing none, I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to open it for discussion and state that I would like to make a motion. Application 24/25-15, motion to approve based on the following hardship. An existing porch was attached to the house prior to the remodeling and removal. Replaced porch with a, what should I say, a deck, I mean a porch was there. Replace the porch with a deck with no additional coverage. FEMA requires house to be elevated due to 50% rule and allows for steps to access the property in setback. The updated house is now in harmony with the neighborhood. Reduction in bulk in the front of the house with the removal of the covered porch now a deck. We're only approving the deck, not side deck as requested in the application of 100 square feet, not 227 square feet. The drawing that we're using was produced by Robert C. Simone, and the latest date is 3/4/25, added note six. The applicant has two years from the date of approval to get this finished.
Okay.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Woo hoo, thank you. Thank you very much.
Application 24/25-32, Teresa Salties requests a variance of par 10.7.1 and 10.7.2 non-conforming enlargement slash change, par 24.5.1, street line setbacks, 25 feet required, 10.3 feet proposed in par 25.5.3, side yard setbacks, 15 foot required, 10.9 feet to the north and 2.9 feet to the south. Proposed the zoning regulations to permit the raising of a roof to accommodate a code compliant front door at 20 Uncus Road, map one, lot 122, Residence A District, Coast率的 Management. Who will be representing the applicant?
Mike Saltis.
Mike Hattie.
Hello everyone, I'm Mike Saltis and my wife Teresa, and also have Springer Southmore Construction Company, the EMS Construction. This is our application for variance on our property at 20 Uncus Road in Hornfield Point. In this application, we're trying to correct a current code deficiency for this house that was built in 1939. The calculations and the original plans that you have before you, when Stella helped me write this and admitted there's a mistake, and she has corrected one. She can give it to you in a term that I can explain, but it's a pretty simple mistake, but anyone have that clear?
Yes, could you get copies?
I think there's enough copy here.
It was listed as 6.4 from basically where the gutter is to the ground, it's 6.4 from where the base of the house is to the gutter, so that's what the correction is. So the existing front door leading into the house has a door that's currently 6.12 with a four inch step. This is less than code and presents problems for taller people who are entering the house. The solution is to raise the roof of the porch 12 inches to be able to accommodate a code compliant door of 6.8 plus a header, which will include room for the gutter. A variance is required because the porch is located within the front yard and both side yards. Existing front yard is 10.3 feet, with 25 feet is required. The existing east side yard, the top of the survey, is 10.9 feet, with 15 feet is required. And existing west side yard is 2.9 feet. None of those change in this. The only change is that the roof over the porch will go up 12 inches, keeping the same slope. The hardship is small size of the lot and the non-conforming location of the house on the lot. Because the porch is located in setback, we cannot increase the height of the door to make the door code compliant. The change is consistent with the neighborhood. There are many of these cottages that have improved over the years. There's a letter of support from Ray and Brenda Dyson, who had the same problem with the same style house and raised the roof to allow for a code compliant front door several years ago. And while we're doing this, we're completing other improvements, new siding, new roofing, new roofing shingles, new windows. Finally, again, the improvements will not increase coverage or floor area, considerably raising the height 12 inches. And I took some pictures two weeks ago, this is what the house.
Unfortunately.
Oh, you can't show pictures?
You can, but the problem is, is that we need enough pictures for everybody. So we have to go with what we have unfortunately.
Okay.
So, but because of the fact that it's not, it wasn't presented, we can show them, but we don't have enough copies to give to everyone, that's the problem.
Can I hold them up? Because I think you'll just.
You can hold them up, but it's a problem because you're reading them in and you don't have. So I would prefer not to. I think this is, I think this, I think we're in a good enough position where we don't have to look at the pictures in order to make a decision on this. I prefer not to, because.
Correct.
Okay, would you like to read in the two letters from both of your neighbors?
I was only aware of one letter, but yes, one from the Dysons. Oh, great, okay, so I just read them out loud?
Yeah, just read them out loud.
All right, first one is from Ed and Anita Fiore, who are our neighbors just to the immediate right. And they say, to whom it's concerned, we have received notice pertaining to the above mentioned homeowner and property located at 20 Uncus Road. Old Saybrook, non-conformity enlargement change, please be advised that we have no reservations or objections to the request to change this property by the current homeowner. Thank you for your attention to this matter, sincerely, Ed and Anita Fiore. They are the one that's, the property's the shortest distance right there. And then I had mentioned the Dysons live perpendicular across the street and have the same style house and all. They wrote, we are in full support of the Salties' request to raise the porch roof in order to accommodate a code compliant front door. The new siding door and windows they are proposing are a great enhancement to their home and by extension enhancement to the neighborhood. We live at 13 Uncus in a very similar style house, and we have done the same modifications to our house to accommodate a code compliant front door. These houses were built in the 1930s with the front porch entry being a shorter height screen door. Over time, the porches were enclosed and the doors were replaced with undersized solid doors. ZBA approved our request to raise the enclosed porch by approximately one foot. This presents virtually no visual impact with this change. Ray and Brenda Dyson, 13 Uncus Road.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions of the applicant? No, hearing none. I'm going to open it to public comment. Is there anybody in the public here or online that's in favor or opposed to this application? Please raise your hand or speak. Hearing none, I'm going to close public comment. Go into discussion. At this point, I think it's pretty clear. I'm just going to make a motion, and if you want to make any adds to it, you're more than welcome. Application 24/25-320, Uncus Road, motion to approve based on the following hardship. They need to elevate the roof in order to install a code compliant door. This was due to the age of the home when it was originally built. It's a minor increase to the bulk. It's going to improve health and safety and access in and out of the house. Home will be in harmony with the existing homes in the neighborhood. There is no increase to building coverage in gross floor area. Drawing we have produced by Number One Home Designs in Connecticut dated March 11th, 2025 changes. You have two years from the date of the approval to implement this. Are there any friendly amendments that anybody would like to add? Hearing none, can I get a second?
I'll second it, it's very straightforward, I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much. Do you need the letter?
Uh, no, I don't know the letter, but thank you. See, that was easy, right? Okay, is Joe Wren here? Application 24/25-18, Andrew and Patricia, how did you pronounce the last name?
I say Colo, how about that?
Colo, okay, I don't want it. I don't want it. Requested variance of par 10.7.1 and 10.7.2 non-conforming enlargement slash change. Par 24.5.1, street line setbacks, 25 foot required, 13.7 foot to the E, 14.5 to the house, and 12.3 to steps proposed. Par 24, 24.5.3 other yard setbacks slash 15 feet required, 12.3 feet to the north E, 13.3 feet to the north house, 12.1 feet to the proposed, to the platform, 9.4 feet to the east E, and 10.4 feet to the east house proposed. And 24.6.2 coverage 20%, we require 29.2 proposed of the zoning regulations to permit the partial demolition of existing home and construction of additional 93 square foot deck with steps, 55.5 square foot porch with steps and 28 square foot platform. And 96 old ceiling, map 29/lot 38, Residence A District, Coast率的 Management. I would like to open the public hearing. Who will be representing the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Joe Wren, professional engineer at Indigo, here in Old Saybrook. We have this one and the three following as well. I didn't hear the roll call as I got here 10 minutes after 6, so we have five?
We have five. You have five. We have two alternates and the rest are board members.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Yeah, because I would tell you. I always want to make sure we have at least five, yeah. So, good evening. This first project is 96 old ceiling, chairman just mentioned. There is an existing house and a detached garage as shown in the pale yellow on the plans. What's being proposed is to completely remove the detached garage. And this house was lifted somewhere around 2010-ish. Well, so somewhere around the storm, the time of the storms, I mean, it's. It was lifted to the FEMA levels at that time, which have since changed in 2013 as we now. So even though it was lifted right before or during, it wasn't lifted to the current amount. So the idea is to, since the garage, the only garage being removed, to add a garage, attach garage, more conforming of course, and then remove this northern portion of the house that's non-conforming. The main portion of the house and lift that an additional three feet plus or minus to get it up to meet current FEMA and the town also since then went to the plus two versus the plus one at that time. So now the new home will not only meet FEMA, but it'll meet the local flood ordinance as well, where it didn't before, even though it was a recent runoff, renovation. Also, the septic system currently is on the south side of the house underneath that patio where the attached garage is going. And a new system that has been approved by CRAD, amounted system, will be at this location on the south side of the property. And you have the approval with your application as well. One unique characteristic about this property, given, you know, their size and so forth, this green line represents inland wetlands. So down close to the shore, I think by now we're all familiar with these in old sea lane that's driven between Saybrook Manor and Indian Town with the inland wetlands. So we already have inland wetland approval for this property. The garage you can see was pretty much right along the edge of the inland wetland, so that's being removed. So the structure is pulling away from the wetland and away from the setbacks as well, becoming more conformant. So the variances that we're requesting are on third page of the application. Of course, the front yard from the street, that is 13.7 to the E and 12.3 to the step that's a little bit closer to the property line. The north setback here is going to 12.1 to 12.3 in that location. And that is because of this closest corner on this side. But you can see by removing this portion, we're getting much more conforming than the existing house is. The, on the east side or the rear, where 9.4, and again, it's because of this jug, whatever you would call it, jog in here. If that was squared off, we wouldn't need that setback. But since we have this little weird 90 degree jog here, that gets closest to that northeast corner of the house, so hence that setback. Coverage, we're at 29.2%, but if you look in the table here, presently at 30.9%, so it's a 1.7% reduction in the coverage. Although not conforming, it's more conforming than what we have today. And then 10.7.1, 10.7.2, which we always see when we're working with an existing house, the general non-conform, existing non-conforming setbacks. So with that, Denise Vondosol is here, she's the project architect. I'll have her walk you through the beautiful home, and then if you have any questions. There's better.
It was a blankie enough.
All right, I just want to clarify one thing to start. We are saving, like Joe said, we're saving the foundation of the existing house. We're adding on to it, but the existing, the existing frame structure is all being demolished and rebuilt. Okay, so, so again, we are attaching the garage. It is in the, on the lower level. It's going to, for FEMA, the lower level of the house is going to remain just storage. And then the garage will be flood compliant. And all the living space is on the, basically the second and third floor. It's a seasonal three bedroom house and is staying, going to be reconstructed as a seasonal three bedroom house. We are currently, the front stairs, and you can see in the photos that I handed out, the current front stairs, main staircase is right in the front, even further into the setback, so we're removing that. We do have a few couple steps at the bottom of the new run that actually sit forward of the existing foundation, but it's definitely less non-conforming than currently. There is a rear, a small 6x10 rear deck so they can grill and have a second means of degress out of the house on the main floor. But that deck is smaller than the existing deck that's there currently. The house is under 35 feet, even lifted, it meets code, it meets FEMA. I think overall, it's got a lot of, we're reducing a lot of the non-conformities here.
Great. Does anybody have any questions?
One more. Sorry, I just wanted to go through the hardship. Okay, now, some matter of course, I apologize. No, it's okay, so hardship we have in the fourth page of your application. The existing property is an existing non-conforming lot of record, as we know. The existing house is constructed in 1940 and then reconstructed in 2011, 2012. Her variance is granted at that time. The lot area is only 57.4 and 41.2% net because of the wetlands of that required in the zone up to 12,500 square foot. The lot width is also non-conforming at 90 feet where 100 feet minimum is required. With the small lot area, yard setbacks and inland wetlands, only 1,766 square feet of the lot is buildable without variances. So any reasonable house in the subject property would require variances. More than 75% of the lot is restricted by yard setbacks and inland wetlands. It's 100% restricted with 100 foot up and review area for the wetlands. Additionally, the lot is also restricted by 2,032 square feet of inland wetlands on the east side. And therefore, the entire lot, again, is within the 100 foot regulated area. In addition, then we go to list all the eliminations and reductions of non-conformity, so I want to just quickly go through those. There are several existing non-conformities or previously granted variances that are proposed to be reduced or eliminated. Number one, street line setback, existing non-conformity is reduced from 10.6 and the 13.7, that's what the existing is. Northern side yard, that non-conformity is reduced, the existing E is 2.7 feet. And now we have the electric meter platform at 12.1 feet and the proposed E at 12.3, so about almost a 10 foot positive there. Southern side setback, we eliminated that current non-conformity, I'll go back to the site plan quick, because of demolishing that detached garage here. So we've eliminated that south side yard not conforming. It was to the E, it's 1.8 feet off that southern property line. And now the proposed house E is 25.5 and it's conforming. The rear yard setback reduced, the existing deck is at 2.7 feet to that rear yard. And the proposed E is 9.4 feet, so almost seven feet, six plus. Coverage reduced from 30.9 to 29.2, as mentioned earlier. In addition to all of the above, the house now will be fully FEMA compliant and local flood ordinance compliant to all the current rules and regulations. Okay, without that, now we can.
Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Ask the question, ask wait. John?
I know the house fairly well. I used to live in the neighborhood. The house, is the grade getting changed whatsoever? Is there bill being brought in?
Only for the, only what's necessary for the septic system.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
My concern, my concern, I know the houses to the left and right of it, and the how, this particular house is already proud of them in terms of elevation. My concern is with the wetlands in the back, it's going to start affecting the neighbors.
We're reducing the coverage, so I want you to reduce coverage, reduce stormwater runoff. We're also going from a current driveway, long driveway back to the existing detached garage, and we're going to a crush zone driveway there, so we're reducing the stormwater runoff.
Okay.
Perfect. Any other questions of the applicant? I don't have any.
By the way, thank you for answering my question.
You're welcome.
Hearing, hearing none, I would like to open it to public comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak for or against this application?
Yes. Would you like to speak? Yeah.
Please come forward and state your name and your address.
Jeffrey Fitzgerald. I, my wife and I own 94 ceiling, the property immediately north. I'm in support of this application. I do have a question or two for the engineer.
What you need to do is address it to me.
That's fine.
And then I will get an answer, so what's your first question?
The roof drains, are they designed yet? And if so, where will they outlet? Because that's, that's always, that's where the biggest source of storm water from the house.
Yeah, so similar to the response to the last question, we're actually reducing the amount that buildings cover the property right now. And when you do that, you have less roof area, so you have less impervious area, less runoff. Because of the low elevation and the proximity to wetlands there, you can't put storm drains underground because there's nowhere to go, you'd be under the water level. So I don't know that Denise has them all specifically designed yet, but they most likely will just go to the, on splash blocks to the ground.
And the driveway is a pervious driveway that will also absorb water.
Yes, the decorative crush zone driveway layer between the house, we have to have a pay different for all the works?
Correct.
Correct, the rest of the property line, but the rest of it will be crushed.
Any other questions?
Yeah, do you think that those can be designed to go directly east towards the wetland and and not not towards the the north? That's uh.
The one good thing is that that portion of the house that's closest to your property line is being removed.
Right, right.
The house is coming in, the house generally it's conforming in this area, it's just close to this back corner.
Yeah.
Um, so we're pulling that back. So any runoff has about fourteen fifteen feet inherent to travel.
To be direct.
Traditionally, we would, we would try not to direct it into the wetlands if we could avoid it.
Oh.
The runoff from the house, we would try not to direct it because the wetlands, it's like, uh, because we don't want uh, the water coming down directly into the wetlands from the house. We like it to be absorbed by the property. Because of the fact that.
The wet, wetlands in that area, uh, they're, they, it's a lovely, it's not really wetlands. It's like, it's a lawn. It's historically been lawn.
It's referred to.
And it's, 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 it's just gotten wetter over time.
It's all, it's all spongy at times.
Yes, it's spongy, but it acts like a filter. It actually acts like the filter to to protect.
Right, but that's, that's where storm water should be directed to because that's really the way it's always gone is from sea lane towards the rear. That's why.
Should it have to naturally go in that direction? But we would not, I would not tell anyone to direct it in that.
Where else are you gonna direct?
You direct it to the sides of the house, let it absorb into the. I'm not gonna argue with you. I'm just telling you that you get, that would be a problem. You wouldn't direct it into the wetlands. And you wouldn't run pipes into the.
Now, why not?
Because you just don't do that.
No, why not?
Because the.
No, why, let me just, let me correct. So DP has a problem with directing fresh water into tidal waves. These are not tidal waves, they're inland ones. One of the purpose and functions of an inland well is for flood attenuation. So you could put fresh water into a freshwater wet.
Right.
Um, we can, they're usually, the downspouts are usually on the corners of the house, so we can direct out toward the road.
Right.
And we can direct this one toward the back.
Perfect.
And you'll have, we will go over some graphs before it gets.
I am very confident in the engineer and and the land owners. Let me just say, I fully support this, Andy and Patty are great neighbors and they're I I'm excited. They're, they're gonna have a great project. I just was curious is what, well, that's, that's basically. You know, it's, it's not a, it's all, it to to call that a wetland, it's that there's plenty of wonderful wetlands and tidal wetlands in town, and this is a little. So great. And that's all. I don't, I have nothing else to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I jump in here for a second?
Go right ahead.
Is it possible? As I said, I'm familiar with the property and to Mr. Fitz, is it Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Um, to his point, is it at all possible to get a dry well in the northeast corner of the property to collect the two downspouts coming off the north side of the property? So we're not dr- dumping it into the wetlands, we're protecting his house. I mean, nothing big, you know, like a three by three, just like a dry well. Is that at all possible?
No, because the dry well wouldn't be dry, it would be full of water.
Yeah.
You're at the same level as the wetlands, so the groundwater to your, you'd be in the groundwater table.
Let me just say, I'm confident that whatever, what they're gonna do is gonna be fine. They're, they're, we're, we're, we're good. I just was.
Yeah, I I I figured that would be a problem. Uh, John, because of the water table, that the, the dry well would fill up.
That's why the septic system is above the ground.
That's the problem. This is one of the reasons we're elevating.
Well, I mean, with the impervious driveway, my thought was not even digging down far, just giving the, anyway. Okay.
It's li- it's less coverage and permeable, not an impervious driveway, a pervious.
Pervious driveway.
Permeable, pervious.
Permeable, sorry.
Driving, we are, we are reducing. Um, we are reducing the overall stormwater runoff from the site. Correct. So very difficult to mention, but since we're reducing the impervious area, we're reducing the storm.
Do you have a question?
For infiltration.
Yeah.
Plot is a pancake up there. Yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hearing no other individuals for or against this application, I'm going to close public comment. Uh, going to deliberation. Is there any discussion that we'd like to have before I put a motion together? And you may make friendly amendments to the motion once I put it together. I uh, obviously, uh, application twenty four slash twenty five dash eighteen ninety six old sea lane. Motion to approve based on the following hardships and reductions of nonconformity. We're reducing street line setbacks, we're reducing north side setback, we're eliminating south yard setback, we're reducing rear yard setback. We have a reduction in coverage. Obviously, they broke the fifty percent rule and had to meet FEMA requirements by elevation. The hardship is this, uh, it it's that, one of the hardships is that the lot sits entirely within the hundred foot regulated inland's wetlands. And the unit will be in harmony with the existing neighborhood. Drawing. Prepared by, okay, who's this company? Indigo drawing dated one nine twenty five, minor revisions for submissions. Uh, there are three sheets associated with that. It was originally uh, 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 drawn on December twentieth, twenty twenty four. Katie Designs LLC, A one, proposed floor plans dated. They did January ninth, twenty twenty five. There's sheets one of two and two of two. Anybody like to add any friendly amendments to my motion? Do you think I've covered?
I would add an amendment to that the engineer shall work with the client to direct the stormwater to as least the disadvantaged or uh, uh, the least disruptive place possible on the site.
With respect to the neighbors.
With respect to the neighbors in the north.
Okay. Uh, are there any other friendly amendments that we would like to add to that? John, have anything?
No, I'm good, but thank you, Chuck.
Hey, uh, Aaron, anything you'd like to add?
Nope, sounds good.
Hearing none, uh, what's that?
Building permit.
What?
The building permit must be obtained within.
Oh, the building, and the building permit must be with, must be obtained within two years of the approval. Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That was a very nicely done. That's an example of how to do it. Not bad, right? Application. You have that? Okay. Are you ready for me? Oh, just wanna make sure. Application twenty four slash twenty five dash twenty. James. Richard Darowski.
Sure, close enough.
I apologize. I really apologize. Okay. And Nancy Fuller, okay, you had that one? Request a variance of par ten point eight point two, nonconforming building slash conforming required, nonconforming proposed and ten point eight point three nonconforming lot, twelve thousand five hundred, required five thousand nine fifty square foot proposed. In part twenty four point five point one, street line setbacks slash twenty five feet required, seventeen point nine feet proposed to stairs and twenty two point eight feet to eve and twenty four point one to house proposal, returning regulations to permit the construction of a two thousand two hundred and seventy two square foot home at nine, uh, Charterier Ave, map twenty slash lot seventy nine residence aid district, coastal area management. Who will be representing the applicant?
Good evening, once again, Phil Run, special engineer of Indigo, uh, in Old Staver. Representing the applicant, uh, also with me is Michael Knowie, uh, who's the project architect uh, on this project. Um, so as you mentioned, this is located nine Charterier, which I have to corner lot. So we have Charterier Avenue here to the south, and then we have Vincent Avenue to the east. Um, again, in the pale yellow, that's the existing house. And up in the northeast corner, that pale yellow is the existing shed that's in the front yard uh, area, not. And so we have a small nonconforming lot of record. It's a corner lot. Um, the house is well into the Charterier Avenue front yard setback. Now you can see half the bulk or so, more or less, is within that setback. And then that shed is, um, if that wasn't a street line, it would be conforming, but can't have it in the front yard setback, so that shed is not conforming as well. So what the proposal is, is to uh, tear down the existing house, rebuild the house shown in that uh, pale red there. And uh, add a new shed back in this uh, north corner, northwest corner that is conforming to the regulations two feet off the property lines. It's over so that does not count toward coverage in GFA. It's a hundred points per feet or equal um, in two feet or more from the property lines. Uh, the house uh, is in a flood zone. It's in V eleven. And the house, of course, uh, since tear down rebuild, it will be conforming to flood regu- regulations and the flood ordinances. Uh, the variances on this one uh, are rather simple. Uh, so we have our ten eight two and ten eight three, our tear down rebuild, our standard ones that go with all tear down rebuild applications on a lot uh, that is too small. Uh, and then twenty four point five point one, which is the front yard setback, street line setback, which is only on the Charterier Avenue side. We are conforming on the Vincent Avenue side. Um, we are nonconforming on the Charterier Avenue side. Um, by, let's see, twenty two point eight feet to the eve and twenty four point one feet to the house. So it's close to the twenty by feet. Um, and it's a lot more conforming than the existing house, as you can see in the sheds. Uh, the other part of this, this is on public water. Uh, we are putting in a code compliant septic system uh, over in this area here. And again, that has been approved by Pratt and that is part of your package. This time I'll just bounce right to the hardship because it's rather short and then I'll, I'll show you the house quick. So the existing properties and existing nonforming lot of record, the lot area is five thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet, where we all know twelve five is uh, required. It's a corner lot with two street line setbacks due to the double front yard setbacks of the corner lot this side and this side. You can see the L shaped wedge it takes out of the buildability. Uh, the buildable area of the lot is re- reduced to a mere thirteen hundred and fifty square feet or only twenty two point seven of uh, percent of the lot area. Several existing nonconformities will be reduced or eliminated as follows. Number one, the elimination of the front yard setback on the Vincent Avenue side. So we're eliminating that current front yard setback. Um, eliminating the front yard setback, nonconforming for the shed on the Vincent Avenue side, as we mentioned earlier. Uh, elimination of the side yard setback on the north for the shed, so the shed doesn't meet that side yard either, uh, and now will. Uh, and for improvement of the front yard setback on the Charterer Avenue side. Um, plus or minus four feet for the steps and plus or minus six point seven feet for the house further back. Uh, additionally, the septic system will be replaced with a hundred percent code compliant system and the new house will be fully. Uh, so with that, I'll let Michael show you the house really quickly and then. It very nice. You have your work, you could just add your work. They're probably.
My name is Michael Knowie with thirty sixty design plus. Well, Sabre.
Okay.
N O E.
N O E. I know he, first name Michael. Just quick look at the floor plan. So we're going from existing single story home to a two story home. The owner's desire to have some expansion as well as meeting the current um, energy code and FEMA compliance due to this substantial improvement on the site. Um, there's an inadequate pure foundation, existing um, foundation system, so we'll be replacing that with a new full foundation FEMA compliant um, to support both two story home. We'll look at the floor plan and see that um, there's a manner to make the buildable area, professor foot, um, in the setbacks. And since we will be knocking it down, we are shifting and relocating the footprint to better.
More conform.
More more conforming, better suit a lot.
Yeah.
Um, and require access in the front rear of the house, you know, to enter an egress, the home. In fact, is any other questions related to the architecture?
Point out relative to the house and site plan together. Our, since the house is elevated, we have an elevated stair on the back of the house. So with that elevated stair on the back of the house, we didn't want to introduce a new nonconforming of the house being violating the rear yard setback. So you can see what we did back here is that stair is necessary for the the rear egress, so we made that conforming. And that slid the house a little bit more forward. So if we didn't need that, then we could slide the house back, we might be conforming on the front or more conforming. Um, but we did not want to introduce a new nonconforming. We wanted either eliminating existing one or making existing one.
Well, according to our tradition, the hardship anyways, because you get the twenty five foot setbacks on two property lines.
Yeah, and it it really eliminates a lot of the buildable area.
Exactly.
It's just a little smaller rectangle.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, do we have any questions of the applicant? Any questions of the applicant? I I have none. Uh, hearing done. I'd like to open it to public comment. Is there anybody in the public here or online uh, for or against this application? Please stand up or raise your hand.
Hearing none. I must, oh, kind of.
Absolutely.
Forgot to mention. Um, the structure coverage is also existing. It's just over your twenty percent, twenty point one percent. And a slight reduction on the coverage to make it fully conform, even though it's a little bit, it is now twenty point zero percent.
Yes. Which is excellent. So uh, I would uh, like to close public comment and open it up for discussion amongst the board. If nobody has any questions or discussion, I'd like to make a motion. Hearing none. Uh, and obviously there's uh, no cam required. Application, application twenty four slash twenty five dash twenty. Motion to approve based on the following reductions and hardships. The coverage is now conforming. Uh, elimination of front yard setback Vincent Ave, reduction of front yard setback Charter Ave, hardship corner lot. The the elimination of the shed on the twenty five foot setback to the front of the house. Uh, we obviously broke the fifty percent rule, so we were forced to elevate to FEMA plus two. The uh, the project is in harmony with the neighborhood and it improves health and safety. We have drawing. Okay. B sixty design plus LLC, I have. We have uh, revision, latest revision is one thirty one twenty five. Yeah, and there are EX one point one, A one point one, and A two point one. Drawings. We also have the drawing from from Indigo, which was dated February third, twenty twenty five with no revisions. Two years from the approval to get it proven.
Thank you.
Any like, like to add a friendly amendment to what I, to my motion? Hearing none, could I get a second?
Second.
Andrew seconds. All those in favor? Andrew seconds, all those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, thank you. That was a nice question. Application twenty four slash twenty five dash twenty one C. Sarah Frick requested variance of part twenty four point five point three. Other line setbacks fifteen feet required, eight foot to eve and nine foot to building proposed, there are regulations to permit the construction of a one thousand forty four square foot two-story garage at thirty Maple Ave. Three seventy Maple Ave, I'm sorry. Map three lots three fifty eight residence ages to coastal area management zone. Uh, this. By a CAM, who will be representing the applicant?
Once again, Mr. Chairman Joe Ryan, special engineer of go here and old Sabre. Um, just a note on the CAM, so you'll see on the application form, it says CAM exempt, we were since we're not within a hundred feet of a resource, we initially thought that we didn't have to do a CAM and then um uh the initial consultation with town staff and so forth, we're going to do a CAM, but then first, once you received the application, asked for a CAM, so we submitted a CAM.
Right.
Uh, this does have the C attachment to the application, so I just so uh good evening once again, and project architect again on this application is Denise Landals, who is here with me. Uh, Sarah Frick, the owner and the applicant is also with us over here on the left. Um, so as you mentioned, uh, project is located at three seventy Maple Avenue. Uh, another corner lot, so we have Maple Avenue or Connecticut State Route one fifty four along the south. And then along the east, we have Oakwood Road. So there's an existing beautiful home uh right in this location, that's not any part of the application, that's not being touched. Uh, or renovated with this uh application. Uh, the purpose of this application is, again, the pale yellow is the existing garage on the property and that is being, it is non-conforming, of course. To two setbacks, that is being removed. A new garage with living space above is being proposed. Uh, we've had uh long discussions with town staff. There's no cooking facilities in the second floor, so it is not considered an accessory dwelling unit. Um, it has a small counter and it has living space. Sarah's uh adult daughter um unfortunately has, and I have a letter from her doctor here. And it's probably appropriate now, I was going to discuss it during letters of support. Um, but it's probably better that you have that information now as we go through the site plan and so forth. And I'll submit this, um, we never got a copy of that, yeah, I'll submit this, uh, I have a copy here, I have other copies that's been for you. And this letter is from Harper Healthcare, it's dated March fifth twenty twenty five. Uh, it's from Patricia, I can't pronounce that. Limpignally. We have all the hard names. Um, and uh she's from Stamford, Connecticut. And it's addressed to Chairman Gaden, Volt Sabre Z V A. Dear Chairman Gaden. Sienna, who is Sarah's daughter. Sienna Frick is a patient in my practice since early childhood and has been di- diagnosed with how do you pronounce that one?
Hemiplegia.
Hemiplegia, thank you. This is why I never could be a doctor. Um, secondary to cerebral palsy along with pervasive developmental delay. The disability has affected the right side of her body and cognitive function. She also suffers from intractable headaches. And because of these headaches, she has been unable to maintain meaningful work in order to support herself financially. Her parents have thus been caring and financially supporting her and have determined that this will be the long-term plan. In an effort to provide the physical living space for their daughter, they are requesting that you allow additional building to occur at their home. Thank you for your consideration to this matter. And signed by that same uh doctor, so you now have a copy of that for the record. We have um other letters of support and we'll talk about those uh toward the end. Um, but just to set the premise of that, our discussions with the town and this letter from um the medical professional. So there are no cook, there's no, there are no, there's no stove, there's no dishwasher, correct?
No.
There are no cooking facilities in there. Um, just like any uh area would have, might be like a small fridge. Um, but there is no cooking to occur in there. And Sarah has no intention of uh using this property like for an Airbnb or anything, it's solely for her daughter with her disability. Um, she is, well, I talked to her about this previously, she's willing to sign something or put something on the deed if she had to. Um, stating just that, she has no interest in creating an Airbnb or any type of temporary rental type situation that is only for uh the benefit of her daughter with this disability. Um, so back to the site plan. So the garage is uh slightly larger than the existing one, but it is pushed further back, further to the west. And is now conforming to that eastern street line setback, Oakwood Road uh setback. The side yard setback on the north side, you can see is significantly better, but it's not fully conforming. And the purpose for that is if that was fully conforming, it would make the garage area close to the house and just for access, air, light and water through between the houses, emergency access, whatever might be necessary. Um, uh fire separation and so forth. Uh, we chose this location, which is significantly better uh on the north side than it is today. Um, there is a since there is, of course, a bathroom in that living space. Uh, there is a new septic system just for that building. Uh, that was proposed, designed and approved by Pratt and you had that approval in your pack as well. Uh, so this is, functions uh separately from the house. But again, there's no cooking in there for the cooking and for the meals. Uh, the main house will be used.
So are you saying there's a, there's a bathroom?
Yes.
Yes. So then, so you have water?
Yes.
You have a bathroom. So the only thing that you don't have
A kitchen.
Is an oven.
Oven cooked hot, anything.
Oven oven cooked hot, that's the only thing you don't have.
Dishwasher.
I just, I just, I'm just trying to understand it, but you, but you have your own, it's, it's, it's completely but it does have, it is hooked up to waste.
Yeah.
Septic system, it does have water, okay, I just wanted, just so I had a feel for it.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're allowed, you're allowed to have a bonus room.
No, I understand that, I'm just trying to understand.
Yep.
Because I didn't really understand that.
Okay.
That was confusing.
Denise will go through the floor plan.
Yes, that was, that was my concern, okay? Because it does have, so it's, it's almost like it's a separate unit.
Correct.
Okay, barring the fact that it does not have a stove and a cooker.
Yeah.
Yes.
The intent is to give her some independent living.
I understand.
Yes, so independent living, but obviously it wouldn't make any sense with this developmental disability for her to go back and forth to wash her hands, wash her face, or the bathroom.
No, no, I'm just trying to understand it.
Meals will be going back and forth to the main house. And will be never used separately for any other use other than that.
So I'm assuming then it has a shower in it also.
Yeah.
Yes, so it's basically, it's a fully living space minus the stove.
It's like a glorified bedroom suite, yes.
Okay, got it, okay, I'm just trying to understand.
Yep, so the variances uh that are necessary um are on page three. And it's just one. And we already went through that twenty four point five point three and that's for that side yard setback uh to the, on the north side. Um, it is eight feet to the eve and nine feet to the wall of the building. Uh, the current, you can see on our zoning table here for other yard setback in the northern boundary. Um, the existing is two point nine feet to the garage. And we are going to um nine feet to the wall, so it's a substantial improvement. Um, it's going from, it's uh two point nine and we're proposing the nine feet.
But you're adding a lot of
Three, so about six feet.
You're adding a lot of bulk.
Adding, adding bulk, yes.
Okay.
But eliminating, but we're within the height.
No, I understand, but you're adding a lot of bulk to, to, to the, to the uh
Correct, but we're trickling, trickling.
No, I understand.
That distance away from the property.
But you're adding a lot of
And
Of course, and that's why we're here in front of you.
And eliminating the other streets.
Yep. And the septic system hasn't been installed yet, correct?
No, it has not been, so there is a septic for the main house.
Right, but then, so this is, okay, I understand, that's one of them.
Yes, if these approvals
Right.
Um, go through, then this garage would be constructed and the septic would be constructed at the same time.
Guy, you had a question. Is there any reason why, since the septic system hasn't built, okay? Why the whole unit couldn't be brought into the envelope of the property? I don't understand why not. I really don't. Because you, you don't have an existing septic system, it's not in the way of your, of your current septic system. And I don't understand why it can't be within, why, why it can't be built within the uh property line. I just don't understand.
So the building would have to go six more feet.
Understand that, but it's still, you got it.
You, you got it, but then it gets very, very
I know, but you do have us.
Fire separation?
No. I just didn't understand why, I thought that the septic system might have already existed, but since it doesn't you have an opportunity to make it completely compliant. I don't understand why it isn't. I really don't.
It's better than the existing, um, it's more conforming.
I'm just saying, I don't understand, but then the bulk would be in the buildable.
Whenever, whenever we do these type projects, when we have dense housing, we have, we're doing things down along the beach and so forth. All of the fire departments, Clinton, Olds, every, every town we go to, they always want a minimum of ten feet of distance between structures.
Well, I, I, okay, I'm just, because I'm, the reason I ask is only because, you know, you're on a very small, you're on a small lot, obviously, okay? You have, uh, you know, it's densely populated area with, with, with the homes and you have an opportunity to move it into the buildable area, I mean, or pull it back and then put the septic system in the front, I mean, there's a lot of things you could do here. Would you have it considered?
Well, we did consider those.
Well, maybe, but well, I don't want to tell you what to do, I'm just asking the question.
We've been talking with the owner and, and how she was, she's obviously financing the project.
Right.
And talking with her and with her, the connection um and all the ins and outs with her daughter. Felt that this position for the garage, right, she can agree that we talked about you know, having it closer to the property line, we could go right back to where it was. Uh, we could, we could go, we could take this and we can just go up right where it is and be that.
Get it, get it denied.
True.
You could, absolutely.
But we felt that by eliminating one non-conformity and and lessening the other non-conformity that we have a significant
The problem is, there's so much bulk here. And, and there's so much bulk because you want to, and I
Oh, because we're going two stories.
Because you're going two stories, exactly, so I, I, it would just make more sense to me, and if I was a neighbor, okay? I would say, why can't you build it in your buildable area? And, and the first question that I would ask is, well, is the septic system already there? And if so, well, it's already, we, we'd have to rip up a thirty thousand dollar septic system, but you don't, because it has not been, none of this is done. We have an opportunity to make this thing within the buildable area without any problem at all, but you chose not to. And I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just saying that someone has chose not to, and I, I understand that, but you do have the room to make this happen.
You just said a thirty thousand dollar septic system, right? So there's a thirty thousand dollar patio there.
Well
That's new.
I'm just saying that
Money's money, right?
The septic system, here's the situation. You can either, I, like I said, you have an opportunity here to make this fit within the footprint, as you well know, you know, that's what we would like, given that opportunity. And you have so much bulk.
We have the opportunity to make it less.
Well, but, but, but if you pushed it back, you kept it where it was and tried to elevate, there'd be a question whether you would get that, okay? So I'm not going to argue that point, I'm just saying that since we have a clear slate right here, we have an opportunity to build it within the buildable area. And I, for the life of me, don't understand why we're not doing that. Sorry, want to add to that?
We, we want to preserve some of our yard, we hardly have any yard and my daughter needs some separation because she, she just has
That's not a, that's not a hardship, but what it is, is you have a buildable area.
Yeah.
A large buildable area where you could more than adequately make this fit. You have a septic system that hasn't been installed, so that's not a hardship. So if, if you have some patio work that has to be modified, I, I'm, I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just telling you how we're viewing it.
No, we had all these conversations.
So I just want you to understand.
Started out closer to the property, started out three feet from the property line.
So we can move forward on it, like I said, if you want to do that, or we can discuss.
I would like to hear, because with this, I mean, you know, the unique thing here is we have a developmental very clear
Oh, I'm not arguing that point.
Disability.
But you could still make that fit within the area and she, that would be satisfactory. So no one is arguing the fact that she has a disability and no one's arguing the fact that this would be a great opportunity for her with her parents, I, I totally agree. The only question I ask is, why can't you get it into the buildable area?
Well, we could ask, we can continue and we could talk to the building official and fire marshal and we can get you some reasonings.
Right, because I can, I could, I could make it fit, but I'm not telling you how to decide, I know I could. So I leave it in your
There, in other cases I've been involved with, um, when that gets too close to the main house and the main house doesn't have correct proper fire separation wall, then there's a problem.
We, 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 we approved them with only like three feet between the two and it wasn't a problem. So I just want to let you know.
Well, if you have two new structures and you could build two new firewalls.
So I'm just saying that there's no reason why you can't build this in the buildable area.
Does anybody else have any other?
Hey, John, do you have any questions? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I, I, I do, Chuck, and yeah, I'm, what I'm struggling with is how is this not accessory dwelling? It's got its own septic system, it has its own water service. I was just saying, in a year, that we're not going to install a kitchen up there.
Oh, well, that's another issue, okay?
We, we, the owner said that she would actually file an affidavit with the um on the land records. Number one, number two, if you look at the um definition of accessory dwelling unit, it says a bathroom, a full bathroom and a kitchen. And it will not have a kitchen, it will not have cooking.
All right, respectfully, uh, we're kind of splitting hairs, is there, is there gonna be a tub there or a shower?
That actually, we're not splitting hairs, we, I had this conversation directed with Chris Costa, who's the keeper of the zoning regulations. And she said, no kitchen, no A D U.
Right.
That's why we're here in front of you, we're not asking for a variance to have an A D U. We would add, we would have to ask you for more variances to make this an A D U. If they converted it to an A D U, they'd have to come to you for variances and
If, is the lot size large enough to even do that?
No.
I didn't think so, it's under twelve thousand five hundred square feet, so they couldn't even, they, it would be an illegal build if they actually did that.
Correct, that's my point.
So John
Saying that they're gonna do it next year is just
My big thing, John, is that I, there's so much space of buildable area, this, and this structure, and we're adding so much bulk to this area and on a small property. You have, you have the opportunity to make it fit. It's just if you choose to or not, okay?
Chuck, I'm with you on that, I, I'm with you on that.
I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just saying that you have an opportunity to make it fit, okay, so.
There, there's another concern of mine, with respect to Mr. And Mrs. Frick, I certainly don't know their daughter's uh mobility, and I'm not going to pretend to, but my concern is her on the second floor in the event of a fire that she's out there alone.
I didn't take
I'm, I'm just throwing it out there.
No, I understand. So if Denise want to show us the design, we can, but I think
I think it's important that Denise shows you the floor plan, it's okay, we're coming back anyways, and then I would also like to discuss these letters of support, I I mean, you know, I think personally, this is this is a legitimate, genuine request, they're not affecting anyone else with this application. She's genuinely doing something for her daughter, she's making it more conforming. No one can argue that it's less conforming. It's eliminating the east and it's trickling the setback where the garage has been for forty plus years on that side. So for someone to argue this application So for someone to argue this application, I think it's just ludicrous.
Well, if you're calling me ludicrous, okay.
No, I'm not, I'm not arguing the application.
You know what, I, I feel bad as well, like, I, I, I don't see, I don't see to Chuck's point why the garage can't be closer to the house, if not attached to the house.
Right.
Enlarging the existing structure, I, I just, I, I, I'm trying, I'm struggling to find the hardship.
They definitely, they definitely don't want it attached, because they need to give her some independence. How old is she now?
Twenty-five.
She's twenty-five years old.
And we don't have a problem with that, I mean, I understand.
But it's like an in-law, it, it could, it could be connected to the house with an, like an in-law's apartment above a garage. I, I'm, I'm spitballing, and I feel badly for, for coming across this way in this particular situation, but I'm, I'm just struggling with a couple things here.
We, we thought this was a very fair application, we talked about three feet to the property line, four feet, five feet, six feet, we ended up at nine feet, which is three times the three feet.
I know, but there's so much bulk.
It's so much, but you're right, you don't have, we're not requesting a variance for bulk.
But the tree is coming down.
No, no, you don't understand, oh, that's bad too, okay, we'd like canopy, okay, so. So you're taking the tree down, okay, so.
But there's no variance being requested for bulk, so we.
No, I'm just saying, no, but what's happening is this, because of the structure is, is so tight. I understand, I'm just throwing out, I'm really, you do a great job designing. And I'm just showing, I'm just discussing things that concern us, but I am by no means telling you how to design this.
Oh, we know, we had all these discussions, like I said, it started out the property line.
And I understand that, and that's why you came in front of us, so that we could have this discussion. Because I'm sure that the neighbor has some concerns also, but I just was trying to see what we could do to solve some of the issues before the neighbor got involved. To see if any of these things that I'm doing would solve some of the other problems that would then eliminate that.
One other important thing to note too, is there is no view easement that we know.
No, I know there's no. And we, and we, I, it is what it, it is what it is. If they, if you lose your view, you lose your view, unfortunately, it's sad, but that's what happens. However, we have an opportunity to build it in the buildable area.
Potentially.
Potentially. Well, no, you really do, I could, you could put it in the back corner right here, okay, I mean, you could figure it out. So, I mean, there's ways to do this, so, but I'm not gonna tell you what to do, let's continue, and I'm just, I'm just voicing what I know my fellow board members are, are feeling at this point.
And, and that's fine, so let's look at.
Yeah.
The build, and then I'll talk about there's support, and then we can take.
Sure.
Um, so the existing garage is footprint, uh, I believe it's eighteen by twenty. Um, they can't even fit their car in the current garage, they can fit the, the, um, well, the golf cart, but not a vehicle. So, one of it, one of the purposes of enlarging the footprint is to get, uh, two cars. Um, and it's not an oversized garage, I mean, most two-car garages are twenty-four, twenty-four, this is twenty-two, twenty-four. Um, with part of it being taken up by the stairs to both stairs, upstairs, it's, we have, um, we have like a, what I call a beverage bar, right? Anybody has that in their bonus room, there's a sink, there's an undercounter refrigerator and a counter, and basically that's it. There is a full bathroom, and the rest of it's a big open space with a little closet. It's pretty simple.
It's right.
One room.
Yeah.
Two rooms. Uh, we're going from thirteen and change in height to twenty-six and change.
And, and I understand that, like I said, uh, my, my only question, I'm not questioning the design, I'm not questioning the size. I'm just questioning the location.
Okay.
When we have an opportunity, because of the fact that we have an opportunity to make it conforming, and this is a perfect opportunity to make it conforming, so, uh, at this point, I wanna open it up to public comment, because I wanna give any of the residents the opportunity to speak about it, but I'm not gonna close public comment, we're gonna keep it open.
Uh, start with.
Yes, you can read those letters right there.
First letter of support, one of two, is from Nicole Theroe. Uh, I own the house at three seventy-two Maple Avenue in Old Saver, I support the Frick's project of the garage rebuild, thank you, Nicole and Paul Theroe. Three seventy-two is directly across the street, right, here, looking.
And their house is on the market.
The next one is from Henry Altman, um, Henry Patricia Altman, it looks like Henry is an architect, and it looks like he is, he may be up there as a participant as well.
Okay.
Um, letter to Old Saver C D A regarding the variance application for three seventy Maple. We, Patricia and Henry Altman of Eight Oakwood Road, neighbor diagonally across the streets here. Support the Frick's application and request the zoning variance. The proposal appears to modify an existing non-conforming structure and make it uh, less non-conforming by moving it further away from property lines. We understand that there will be, and they use the term incorrectly here, I need to note, an accessory dwelling unit that's not an A D U built above the garage intended to be used by the applicant. We ask the applicants and their team to be vigilant during construction with dust and noise and so forth. Uh, this is a tight construction site with close proximity to others, the contracting entity and their subcontractors will need to coincide that their logistics and planning and so forth, and keep an open dialogue. Uh, the design appears to be in harmony with the neighborhood aesthetic. Again, we support the Frick's application for a variance, and we wish them good luck with their project. Henry and Patricia Altman, and I can give you both of these.
Yes, that is, we appreciate that. I'll see what the other words on top there. So, at this point, do we have any more questions of the applicant? At this point, because I, I'm thinking at this point, I'm gonna open it to public comment to get to see what some of the neighbors have to say, uh, at this point. So, hearing, I think we've discussed it quite heavily, uh, I'd like to open it to public comment, who in the public like to speak for or against this application?
So I just wanna say, so I'm Attorney Robert Remmer, one ninety-one Main Street, Old Saver, um, and it's always nice to, uh, um, witness on a Mr. Ren's presentation, they're always good, and informative, and I mean that sincerely.
Thank you.
Uh, I see them all over the place. Uh, I understand we're gonna come back in April. Right, so I would, I would, and I'm not sure what we're gonna say, personally, I would like to reserve my comments for them, if that's okay with the.
I don't have a problem with that, because.
There may be, uh, neighbors who wanna say.
There may be nothing they do, there may be something they do, but this would give the, the neighbors an opportunity, but would any of the.
But if I may, just, even if there's nothing done, I would like an opportunity, I wanna reserve my chance.
Oh, absolutely, you're gonna get an opportunity.
And just to clarify for everyone, including me, Attorney Remmer represents.
I represent, uh, Five Oakwood, Carol Moran, and Dan Moran, Carol Moran is in the audience tonight.
Okay. Would anybody in the audience like to speak for or against this application as it currently stands? Or, and if so, please come forward and state your name. I want you to have the opportunity. Or you can bring a cheer of that and say, okay.
You don't have to make her stand, that's ridiculous.
Let her have a seat, just remember, we have someone online that may want to. Yes, we'll get that opportunity too.
Okay.
Would you please state your name and your address?
Hi, I'm Carol Moran, my husband is Dan Moran, some of you may know him. He's worked for Old Saver for years, he's in assisted living now with a stroke, otherwise he wouldn't be here. We've lived in Five Oakwood Road for thirty-six years. He's rebuilt this house from a cottage, and, uh, we both strongly object to this project. It's directly in front of our house, it will impact us, it will affect the value of our home. And so there may be lots of legal talk going on, but I like to think about the people part. Now, Sienna is married, I haven't heard that mentioned, she has a husband, so there's two. Um, I see two more cars. You know, the Fricks have trouble with their parking, they park on the road a lot, 'cause they have a small lot. So now we have two more cars, where are they gonna go? So then, and I don't know, that old garage used to store two cars, I don't know why it can't now. The two, the, two more trash cans, I think. The Fricks put their trash cans on the road, and they never take them in, so everybody sees them, that's not a good look. And two more trash cans, lights, noise, pets. What if they sell this house? You know, who's gonna live there then? I mean, they can be rented, they can sign anything they want, but if they sell it, it can be rented. I see congestion. I, I really do, uh, the lots in Saver are getting smaller, you know, we don't have a lot of space. And Old Beach is a lovely place to live, it's a very bad precedent in my mind. But I'm personal, when I say this, it would be I'm not talking about somebody taking away a view or anything minor like that, I'm talking about this big structure right in front of our house, and people. I'm gonna thank you for your time.
Not a, not a problem. Is there, is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this application? Come, come forward and state your name.
Peter Samus, ten.
Do you get it, so she can write?
Peter Samus, ten Oakwood Road.
Have a seat.
M M I S.
S.
S A M M I S.
Thank you, you said ten Oakwood?
Ten Oakwood.
Thank you.
Kitty corner across the street from this property. I have a number of concerns, number of issues, um, if this is gonna be continued until April, is that situation?
I would, uh, I would say yes, it's gonna be continued April, but if you have any concerns at this point, we should probably hear them, because.
Concerns are, if I go by, uh, Old Saver zoning regulations, um, it certainly is considered a, a dwelling unit and a.
No, it's not a dwelling, it's not, because it can't be placed on twelve thousand five hundred square feet. I'm just telling you, that's a fact.
Right, it can't be.
It can't be, so it can't be a dwelling, it can't, it can't, it can't, it physically can't. You would, you won't, you, it can't, that's the key right now, it's the size of the lot, I'm positive. I've already spoken to the, uh, the, the, Chris Costa, Land Juice, okay, I'm positive, that it cannot ever be
In a apartment.
Living, yeah.
So, so how do you distinguish between a living unit and?
Cause it can't have, it can't have a, a kitchen, operating kitchen.
Today, today you can buy a, a stove top.
I'm just telling you.
Well, I'm telling you, really.
But you know what it is, right now, that would be a violation. It's a violation.
Okay.
So that's it, I, I'm not gonna argue the point.
Legally, it couldn't happen.
Legally, it could not happen. And if, and if you were a neighbor, and you saw, if you felt there was something going on, you could go to the to the town fully enforced. Yes, absolutely, a hundred percent.
Okay.
A hundred percent.
Concerned with the, uh, the northerly property line, indicate that you tripled the distance between the property line. Really don't consider as the fact that, that Chuck is.
Yes.
That the bulk, um, when you had the square footage of the existing garage that's over the property line.
What happens when you look at that? What it is, is the bulk represents a certain coverage area, so that was one of the concerns that I had. So the opportunity was to be able to build this within the buildable area, which, there is buildable area. So if you stay within fifteen feet, they could, they could build the same height as the house.
There's actually more square footage that's in the setback area with the new development than the old development.
I'm just saying that there's, there's room to build this within the area.
So am I.
So, but so that, I'm not arguing that point, so if you have any questions, so because you can come back in April and see what we, what, what, what they present.
So my concern is with that property line, that there is actually, uh, more, uh, square footage that's over the property line than is currently.
No, it's actually not, no, it's far.
Uh, there's two stories.
You're not counting that, you're counting footprint.
Yeah, it's, it's footprint, we're good. Bulk though is, we, we talk about bulk, because you're, you're adding bulk into a setback.
Understood.
Yeah, twelve by twenty in the setback, right now it's two hundred and forty square feet.
Right.
Well, I know, I, I.
I did a calculation.
Six by twenty-four, right, so you're almost half the amount, right?
So if you look at your, your definitions of setback and, and, and open space, it basically says vertically to the sky.
Right. We love to, I was at thirty.
Thirty-five, thirty-five feet.
Yeah, so.
For heights.
But.
So, they're putting, they're putting more volume there.
It's called.
Than is currently there.
Right, so, but do you have any other questions?
Certainly, uh, there's a parking issue.
See, the parking issue, it, it, we wouldn't get involved with, okay, that's not us, you have to have so many spaces available for us, that would not be, the, the Z B A would not be involved with, as long as they have adequate parking for the, for the people in the house, that's it.
How about if it creates a traffic hazard?
Then that, the police would have to get involved.
When does that happen?
We, when you would call the police and say.
No, 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 during this process, or is it, if they go for site plan approval, is that when?
Most, at most, it really wouldn't be any, we would never get involved with that.
Parking came up a couple times, we're moving it further back in the lot, now we could fit four cars in the driveway, we're currently only could fit maybe two. So we're doubling, doubling that, four small, small cars.
Well, I'm just saying, right now, the, the garage can hold two, the driveway can hold four, that's six cars, I can guarantee you that we're not gonna have. We're just, what we're talking about is the structure that we're building, okay? We don't wanna go off on a tangent, we're not gonna get involved with trash cans, we're not gonna get involved with cars parking in the street. We're not gonna get involved with any of that.
What about drainage?
The, the drainage for the property, it's, it's, as far as I'm concerned, if they're, if, if we haven't changed the topography.
Impervious area.
It's, it, there's pervious around the whole property.
There's more impervious area with the development.
Well, I'm just telling you, at this point, it's not gonna be, that, that is not something we're gonna come up with right now.
You talked about drainage on the previous project, why don't you talk about drainage on the project?
This, this is not, this area is not next to the wetlands, okay, it's, it, it is not, it's not elevated. I'm just telling you, I'm not gonna go into this with you right now.
There's a catch basin on this.
Did you listen to me? I'm not gonna go into this with you right now, you have an opportunity to speak, I'll cut it off at this point, I'm not gonna argue with you. You have an opportunity to speak to the board about your concerns, that's it.
Do you want to submit them in writing?
You don't have to submit them writing, we have done, okay? You've, you've stated them, they're on the record.
Okay.
So that's it. If you wanna state them in writing for the next meeting, go right ahead and state them in writing.
After this process, I type up minutes, and those go on, um, permanent record down with the town clerk. So what your statements are, I'll make sure to include your concerns in the minutes, so they'll be there on record. If you'd like to submit another letter, that's by yourself.
But if you wanna bring something in, not a problem, read it into the record.
Thank you.
As a neighbor, not a problem. Are there any other individuals looking to speak for or against, does anybody wanna speak? Hearing none, at this particular point, I think you're going to want to, uh, we're, we're not gonna make a decision tonight.
Did you want me to kinda respond?
Well, yeah, you can respond, absolutely. You can respond to this, but I know you might be doing something different, so then it could change slightly, but whatever, however you'd like to respond to this concern.
Thank you. So there's no zoning limitation on impervious coverage in Old T. There is a limitation on building coverage, which we're conforming to your zoning regulations.
Absolutely.
There is drainage in the street, there's a catch basin right out in the front that'll low spots of any runoff that comes off of that area will be collected by that catch basin, and if the catch basin doesn't work, that's a town issue, public works issue, not a private property issue. Trash cans, Sarah could correct me if I'm wrong, but probably be using the same too, right?
Yes.
Not getting two additional ones, okay? I know, it's not Z B A thing, but just.
It's not a Z B A thing.
The other thing is, a good point was brought up, how much building do we currently have in the setback? And yes, I understand two floors, but footprint wise, just roughly, we have about two hundred and eighty or so square feet of building in the setback.
I'm interested.
Side yard setback, side yard setback. What we're proposing is a hundred and forty-ish square feet, so we're about half of building that's in the setback, side yard. of building that's in the setback, side yard and front areas. We're eliminating everything here and then we, we're reducing what we have on that side. So, you know, all of those items are fun, um, to talk about, um, but they, there are really no merit to any of that. Um, I'm not sure if someone is up Oakwood Road and looking down, they may presently have a view toward the water from the first floor, second floor, with a higher house that presents an impediment to the view. Understood? That's why I mentioned before that there's no view easement that we know with the A2 survey.
That would've been the first question I asked, if any of the neighbors have the.
So if someone's on the east side of Oakwood Road and there's a peak of the water looking down between buildings, yes, the building gets larger, it's bigger. That's just the nature of being two or three back and not first, um, across the street. Um, so, you know, with those items, yes, absolutely. We, I didn't know if, if Altman was on there, if they wanted to speak.
I asked if anyone wanted to speak. He didn't raise his hand. He might be listening at this point, so.
And that's fine. I just wanna make sure I have the opportunity, so.
All right, no. Okay, so.
Did you wanna ask Altman?
No, because he would've raised his hand. It's, it's his choice as a, and, and, yeah, okay, so, so I'm not gonna.
Yeah, and that's fine. They, they, we provided a letter from them too. That's in their register.
Absolutely.
Good or bad or indifferent, I didn't know if they wanted to speak, so. Okay, yes, at this point, we'll continue to.
Do you need a, uh, does he go into any of his, does he go into this? Or we, are we, we need that? Okay. Close by four nine. What's that next meeting? I just wanted to double check.
Four nine, Wednesday, April nine.
So we, we make it?
Yeah.
So we don't.
Is it definitely?
Four nine, is four nine that second Wednesday?
It says Wednesday, April nine.
Yeah, okay, perfect. So you don't even have to request use of, use of days, so.
So you're gonna ask to continue?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's already mentioned that a couple of times, but yes.
Excellent.
So we're gonna continue.
I don't believe they need to make a motion to continue, do I? Okay, I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make a motion to continue application twenty-four slash twenty-five dash twenty-two C, uh, property, uh, no, sorry, I apologize, twenty-four slash twenty-five dash twenty-one C, Sarafri, uh, property located at three seventy Maple Ave for interest. Could I get a second?
Second.
Marty seconds, all those in favor? Aye. For you.
No, I got, I got.
I didn't want you to have to ask all these questions.
Guys, thank you.
Can I get just a slight break to go to the bathroom?
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're back. We're back from our short break. And we're on our final application for the evening. Application twenty-four slash twenty-five dash twenty-two C. I can't actually pronounce names. John Baker and Tessie Olson.
Tessa.
Tessa, excuse me, Tessa Olson. Request a variance of par ten point seven point one slash ten point seven point two, non-conformity enlargement slash change, par fifty-eight point two and par fifty-eight point six, gateway repairing buffer and structure setbacks, a hundred foot required, twenty-one foot, uh, twenty-one point one to patio, forty-one point three to steps and forty-three point one to porch proposed in par sixty-eight point one point two B nine. Title wetland setback, fifty feet required, twenty-seven point one foot to patio, forty-one point three foot to steps, forty-three point one foot to porch proposed of the zoning regulations to remit, to re, to permit the replacement of existing decking on main level and primary balcony. Replace family room balcony with open covered porch screen and existing deck at four sixty-seven Main Street, map twenty-three slash lot eighty-two, Residence Eight District Coastal Area Management Zone, Connecticut River Gateway Zone. And just for the record, you do have a copy of Gateways. We do have a copy of the letter, okay?
For the record, Joe Run, Chris Lusner, Bendigo and Old Sabre, fourth and final time, and I think this will probably be the shortest one, uh, this evening. Um, four things to start with that are important is remember, there is a CAM associated with this, very, very minor work, very little ground disturbance. We are within a hundred feet of a coastal resource, so CAM is automatically required regardless of how little the work is, um, affecting that area. There is no, another clarification, there is no structure that's getting closer to the bottom of the water, so there's a special line. We're kinda working within the existing footprint. The area over on that, on this corner here is an accurate pad, removing structure to pull an accurate patio. So there's no structure that's closer, we're actually getting a little bit further away from that area. Um, of course, we are in a flood zone, but this is well below the fifty percent, so it's not a substantial improvement. And, uh, gateway, so Chairman Gade had mentioned gateway. We did, uh, have a meeting with Gateway at the end of February on this one. They provided a letter to you, um, basically a letter of recommendation.
I mean, if I just summarize it, that, that they do not oppose approval of this application, which is a good thing. They do request, okay, that the property owner use dark sky compliant lighting, directed downward and keep the amount of lighting to no more than is needed for safety and security, and I will write that into the motion, okay?
Absolutely. At, at the meeting, we brought up the term safety and security because they were struggling a little bit about how to write that lighting into the record. And I said, we need the minimum at least for safety and security. Uh, Mark Simmons is here with me as well. He'll be the builder for the project. Um, and he has confirmed since then that the, uh, lighting will be fully cut off and dark sky compliant. Excellent.
We also reached out to the Audubon Society, one of the representatives, and, um, confirmed that adding, you know, screens, we're not adding any more windows, no, you know, reflective glass or anything will have no effect as long as we have screens for any sort of migrant bird. Oh, that's sorry, Mark Simmons.
And you don't have a problem with that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna put that into the motion, so it's the asking question, but I, I'm sure you're gonna accommodate that.
Well, gateway is just a matter of information. They've ordered us a document regarding birds flying into the glass windows.
Yeah.
And since we're, you know, it's, it's three hundred seventy-five feet away from the open water, right, there's a lot of marsh between, you can see up here. You know, they recommend like a grid of dots on the glass to, to bear the birds away, or if you have screens over the windows, that does, uh, the job in the same way. And I believe that's what Mark was just talking about.
Well, the good news is they didn't mention it on this.
Right, yeah, it was just like a matter of concern.
I'm only concerned with, with this.
It was a matter of information. I just wanted, probably they're more aware about it in the future, and I just wanted to. So what's proposed there, just in a nutshell, um, there is a currently existing deck there where that green is. They're just not rebuilding the structure, just replacing the floorboards and the railing, correct?
True.
Above that, um, there's an existing balcony, I believe, that's down. It's just being turned into a covered porch over the existing deck. Uh, open covered porch. And then this area here, um, the blue is existing structure on that wedge. It's a lower deck. There's a step down deck area. You can see in all the photos that, um, Mark graciously took and provided the back of the house. Um, it shows that pizza shape, pizza pie shape wedge there that will be removed, so that structure is being removed. And then the green rectangle is a, an accurate pad, so it does not count as a structure.
Right.
Therefore, it's not coverage. And because of that, we're actually pulling structure away.
Is that part of the aesthetic curiosity?
Uh, that patio?
Yeah, it is a wood. It is a wood patio, so.
Patio, so it's.
But the, the current one is.
What you're replacing with is?
It would be, uh, stone paver.
Okay, so it's bad. It's a pervious, okay. I, I was just asking the question, because it's, I, I, I saw they had structures there, you know, with, but with slots. And, and this is just gonna basically be pervious, bluestone or something like that.
Exactly.
Stone with sand into.
Yeah, absolutely, that's fine.
Crushed on base absorb. The water. Uh, so that's everything in a nutshell. The variances that we had to ask for for the project. Chairman graciously went through those in the description, so I'm not gonna bore you with the details. But just in summary, the gateway, hundred foot riparian buffer, because we're inside that zone. This line is the hundred foot buffer, so the entire house, existing houses in there was built before those regulations, of course. The fifty foot line is this line that cuts through, uh, some of the house, but the bulk of the house is between the fifty and a hundred foot. So hundred foot riparian buffer area, hundred foot gateway conservation zone setback, kind of the same, uh, measurements there. Um, enlargement of a, a non-conforming building, structure or improvement, the change of a non-conforming ten seven one, ten seven two that we always do, and then the fifty foot title wetland setback, the sixty, sixty-eight one two B nine. Since we're within fifty feet of the title wetlands, we have to request that too, but as I said earlier, we're not getting closer to that title wetland. We're working with the existing footprint and we're reducing structure in that southwest corner. Um, the hardship on this one, relatively short. The existing property is a conforming lot of record, however, ninety-eight percent of the lots is consumed by tidal wetlands, the one hundred foot gateway riparian buffer setback and the overlapping fifty foot tidal wetland setback and yard setback. So if you look on this plan, we have the fifty foot buffer and the hundred foot buffer, and then we have the, the yard setback. So we just have this little wedge of the property up in here that's buildable without any variances at all. Um, so that's the unique hardship, land-based hardship for this particular property, and, you know, we're working within the existing footprint and reducing structure at the same time. And the next sentences go on to say that the entire existing house is within the hundred foot setback, gateway setback and buffer. Therefore, no alteration of the existing house is possible without variance. Coverage will be reduced slightly, but is conforming and GFA will increase slightly because of the open covered porch. Um, but is only twenty-two point two percent of the net lot area, less the wetlands like we're required to do. So even subtracting the wetlands, we're still only about almost half, a little bit more than half of the forty percent allowable GFA. Um, and the coverage, um, uh, is conforming already. So it's really just the gateway setbacks and we have a positive letter from Gateway.
Absolutely.
So, um, Mark could go in more detail if you need it, the deck and the porch, if you don't need it, then we can proceed accordingly.
Does anybody wanna ask the applicants any more questions?
I actually had a technical question for Mark.
What?
What's the, uh, what's the existing deck surface?
Existing deck surface is, uh, it's a five-quarter standard. I think it's, I don't know the exact wood material, but it's a stain material. They're looking to go towards, uh, something E-Pay, you know, a little bit less maintenance induced.
Yeah, less maintenance, but more, more, uh, labor for you to put down. But I'm just curious, I'm just curious, because what, did they screw the existing deck down?
Yeah, so the existing deck is just face screwed into, uh, the framing underneath. Uh, we assume that upon removing some of the deck, we're probably gonna have to replace a few joists where needed, but, um, that, uh, that obviously will not be anything affecting the house.
I was just curious, because if they nail the damn man, you're, you, you, that framing's gonna be Swiss cheese, you know that.
Yeah, and it's, I think, I believe the deck was built before the invention of zip tape or, uh, any of the sealers that they use nowadays that we put down ahead of decking, so, yeah, there's a very good chance that that is pretty, pretty well cooked underneath there.
Agreed.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I don't have any other questions. I'm gonna, at this point, I'd like to open it to public comment. Is anybody in the public here that would like to speak for or against this application? Hearing none, I'm going to close public comment. Uh, I think I could easily make a motion at this point, at, I don't know if to go into discussion. You can add friendly amendments to it if you'd like. But I would like to make a motion on application twenty-four slash twenty-five dash twenty-two C. The hardship is the existing property is a conforming lot of record or ninety-eight percent of lot is consumed by tidal wetlands, the hundred foot gateway repairing buffer and setbacks, the overlapping fifty foot tidal set la, uh, fifty foot tidal wetland setback and yard setbacks. Uh, I'd like to the, uh, I make a motion to approve based on the, uh, Connecticut Gateway does not oppose approval of this application. They did put, they requested a few conditions, which I didn't think were unreasonable. They requested that the property owner use dark sky compliant lighting, directed downward and keep the amount of lighting no more than is needed for safety and security. There's, there was no comments in regards to tidal wetland setbacks, uh, the patio will be pervious for, for water runoff uh, from, and, uh, I think that the drawing number, which would be prepared by, uh, John Raymond Baker and Tess, oh, no, sorry, prepared by Bendigo. It was dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Are there any revisions on it? I don't see any, so we have that document. I believe we have. Are there any other documents besides that? I don't think so. Uh, the architectural plans that have, is this the architectural plans? I wanna make sure, I, I, yes, I wanna make sure I'm calling it out correctly, yes. Architectural plans by, uh, Baker, I think I have that. By Simmons, Quality Home Improvement Inc. It's dated November eighth, twenty twenty-four. I don't know if there's any revisions. And there's, I have A, A, A one, A two, and A three and A four drawings. Covered, and to cover myself, we have two years from the time that we approved this to get a permit. Uh, I'd like to get a motion to approve. Can I get a second?
I'll second the motion.
Or Aaron, well.
I'll second it, yep. Okay, John.
The motion carries. Oh, yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the CAM. Could I get a second? And that's for Prop Application twenty-four slash twenty-five dash twenty-two C. Could I get a second?
Second.
Marty seconds the CAM. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, carries. Now we have as, I, I looked at the minutes. Does anybody have any issues with the minutes? So I didn't have any. Any issues hearing none? I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes for the Wednesday, February twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting at six P M. Can I get a second?
Second.
John, John Miles seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Having no other business, I, I make a motion to, I have adjourned. Second by Andrew. All those in favor? Aye.